Good evening to the Village of Buchanan Planning Board. Today is July 15, 2021, and I call the meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of June 17.
Chairman, if they hold it to the mic so that we can hear you.
Is there any additions or deletions needed to go to the minutes?
I don't have any.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, first order of business is property of 193 Catherine Street. Are they ready to present, or is there anything to be?
Yes.
I'm here, Jim Coleman, and the owners, Stephanie and Brian are here as well. Can I share my screen?
Yes, sir.
Marcus?
Yes, Mayor.
Would I be able to have just one minute? I apologize for interrupting.
I'm gonna hold off on the 193 property so the mayor can speak, please.
Okay, please. It's only gonna take, I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought that I would be at the beginning, so I didn't interrupt your meeting. Marcus, can you hear me?
Yes, everybody can hear you. Can you stop sharing the screen for a minute so the mayor can speak?
Yes.
Oh, that's fine, you could leave that off, that's fine. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board. In fairness to all the boards, I felt it was important to have a brief conversation about conflict of interest. And although the planning board must follow the code, there's consultants involved, there's land issue uses, and very little discretion. And our village board manages the village, whether with contractual arrangements, financial agreements. So there is a difference between the planning. So what I'm trying to say, there's a difference between the planning board, there's a difference between the village board, as we all know. We do have two members. One is trustee Murray, who is on our village board, and also our planning board member, Jen Backer. They both work for Houltec, and we all know that. But I just thought it was important, going forward, that anyone who is not sure if something is a conflict of interest, whether friend, family, neighbor, or employer appears before the board, please contact our attorney, Stephanie Portis, who is an invaluable resource to our village. I appreciate all your dedication to our beautiful village, as do our residents. Thank you for all that you do. And I have to go on to another Zoom meeting, but I just wanted to broach the subject of conflict of interest. Okay, thank you so much for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you for letting me go first. Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, we're continue back to property of 193 Catherine Street. Mr. Coleman.
So I will always defer to the mayor, happy to do that. But this will be a very brief presentation. Everyone is familiar with the project before you last month. At that time, we had received extensive comments from HON Engineering. We engaged Cronin Engineering, and they submitted an engineered plan and a item-by-item response to the comments. Basically, we're happy to comply with all of the requests. Time was a little bit limited to engage Cronin, for HON Engineering to review the documents, et cetera. So there are a few items that we have still to respond to. And our hope is that the planning board can approve this application, and then pending, of course, an approval by the building department, and HON Engineering signing off on all the technical aspects of the project, of the concept and spirit of the project, I think we've discussed, and I hope can be approved.
Is there any new drawings that you want to present?
Well, honestly, they're sort of in the realm of engineering. They're very technical. You know, they'd be better, I think, for the building inspector, or George, from HON Engineering to comment. They're sort of beyond my expertise. It's the same concept, it's just sort of the engineered drainage and slopes of the proposal. So I'm showing you the site plan with the proposed contours, section of work, and then there's page of details. Section, and then there's details of all the various components. So honestly, I would defer to HON Engineering to comment at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coleman. George, do you have anything to the plans that are in your memo that was sent out to them?
So, good evening, Chairman, board members. We did review the plan, we had several, we had a list of comments. Cronin Engineering responded to, I'd say, probably half. You notice on there, there's a bunch of "to be provided." I don't think anything in here would stop them from moving forward. I know the planner has developed the resolution. I don't know if we have a planner tonight.
Yes, he's on, Victor's on.
Oh, Victor's on.
Mr. Cronin, can you stop sharing the screen for a minute so we can see the other attendees?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, we did look at the resolution that was presented. It does mention compliance with engineering comments. If the board wanted to move forward with the project pursuant to completing all the responses, we wouldn't have an issue with that. I don't think anything that gets addressed, I don't think it would have any significant change to what you see now.
So between yourself and the building inspectors, you feel that the project could move forward with the documentation, everything that they have provided to you?
They still need clarifications, as mentioned in their responses. But the modifications or changes that they make wouldn't have a significant change to what you see now.
I think at the last meeting for the boards, there was a discussion about landscaping, and maybe Cronin or the applicant can describe what kind of landscaping they're gonna provide to the board, if there's any questions on that, okay?
Actually, I think somebody from the public was, the neighbor was talking and had concerns. I'm not sure if the neighbors. When we opened it to the, I think this is a public meeting, right?
I think it was a public meeting, yes.
Do we have to reopen that?
So who would be addressing the landscaping?
Do we have to open up the public?
Yes.
So at this time, I'd like to open up to a public hearing on 193 Catherine Street. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
So Mr. Coleman or the applicant, or the applicant homeowners can maybe address them with the landscaping?
I have a little trouble hearing, what was the question, I'm sorry?
The landscaping, what type of landscaping would you be providing around the pool area?
Well, the site plan is showing trees and a grassy bank. But I think that was something that was discussed last time. You know, it's a mutual benefit to the homeowners to screen their pool, you know, both from their neighbors, and then their neighbors not to see them. So we didn't feel that there was any statutory requirement for screening. And it's really just gonna be, you know, it's a code-compliant proposal, and there will be screening, but it's really up to the discretion of the homeowners.
And I think at the last meeting, we mentioned something about a six-foot-high fence as opposed to a four-foot-high fence, and I think you're showing the six-foot-high fence now, is that correct?
Well, so the code requires a four-foot barrier around the pool, and the zoning limits a pool fence to six feet. And so we're positioned, you know, we'll have the fence as high as possible, given the need for a little bit of elevation from the grade to the pool deck. But everything will be compliant, here, if I can actually scroll down.
Yeah, Mr. Coleman, I remember we spoke about privacy, and that fence that faces the neighbor was to give privacy for the owners of the property, and also to give them privacy from anyone from the street.
Correct. So it can't be more than six feet tall, can't be less than four. And then we need a little bit of height just for the construction of the, you know, from the foundations to the deck. And so we will max that out. But we don't want to exceed the zoning limits of six feet.
So the deck is approximately a foot, a little bit more than a foot off the ground, and the fence is shown somewhere around four feet. So that gives you a total of five, so according to the code, you can't go higher than six. But you could actually make a five-foot-high fence with one foot off. It just doesn't want to cut it too close, is what he's saying, right?
Right, we don't want contact with all the structure and the soil.
Right.
Okay, so George, do you feel that the landscaping plan is sufficient to move on with the resolution, and also the privacy fencing gating around the pool?
Yes.
Does any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Coleman as far as the design and landscaping and fencing?
No, Stephanie had said, I believe, last meeting, you said you'd put a six-foot fence, well, with that half.
They have six-foot height.
Right, I know. So it was just a point of privacy for that one side, and then it left the barrier for the neighbor and for you.
Right, yeah, so we'll, as part of the permit submission, you know, if we can cut this down to a foot, we'll make that fence five feet tall. We just, the sum of the grade to the top of the fence can't be over six feet. So we will max that out. But we just have to calculate that, we could maybe set this framing up. Our intent is to have as tall a fence as possible, given the zoning and code restrictions. Yep.
Right, I agree, thank you.
Brian or Peter Cook, do you guys have any concerns with the landscaping or the fencing? You're on mute.
Go ahead, we're on mute. The fence, the four-foot fence, is a state requirement for safety around the pool, and the landscaping is not a necessary requirement. They're doing it by choice, and it'll help minimize the impact to the neighbors.
Well, it's also gonna help with erosion, too, the planting in the mulch.
Sorry, I have a very difficult time hearing you, your voice is very low.
I said it's also gonna help out with the erosion with the planting in the mulch.
I think I said, I'm sorry, Jeff, we're having a very hard time hearing you.
I said it's also gonna help with the erosion with having the planting in the mulch.
I will definitely help with minimizing the erosion.
And the grass, they're doing both.
Is there any other people in the public that have any questions? Oh, Tracy, you have any questions?
Tracy, you're muted, in case you want to say anything, Tracy.
I didn't have a question about the landscaping, I did have a question about the lighting.
Lighting?
It said in the paperwork that there will be no lighting on the project?
Correct, we're not proposing lighting around the pool. And if we did, we would show lighting calculations for, that it was compliant with the zoning. But right now, we're showing any, correct.
At this point, the pool at nighttime, then, it will be darkness for the neighbor.
Sorry for not saying light.
Actually, I haven't discussed this with Stephanie and Brian. I mean, the code says you can have up to .1-foot candle at the property line, and obviously, everything has to be shielded and no glare, so we would comply with that, and that's measurable. But this plan is not showing any lighting for the.
Right, you know, if there would be additional lighting, I think that would be important, especially since, you know, the neighbor is concerned about the privacy issues.
Yeah, so we'll certainly discuss that, and, you know, if they do want some lighting, we'll show what it is and what the actual fixtures are, et cetera.
Tracy, did you have any other questions on landscaping?
I didn't have any other questions about landscaping. As a landscaper myself, I always lump the lighting and the landscape together, so that's why I asked that question.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
There's two attendees. If anybody wants to speak, please raise their hand. I guess you can move forward, Chairman.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing on 193 Catherine.
Motion to close.
Motion by the chairman.
Second.
Second by Eileen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. So at this time, can I, okay.
Approve the resolution?
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
You're not done yet, you're not done yet, hold on.
Oh, sorry, I can't hear that well.
Okay, so we have a resolution approving preliminary and final site plans for 193 Catherine Street, Section 4311, Block 1, 4. So at the regular meeting, the planning board of the Village of Buchanan, Westchester County, New York, held in the municipal building of 236 Tate Avenue on the 15th day of July at 7:30 PM. We're called to order by myself, the chairman, and I need to have it.
Oh, okay.
The resolution, I need to be, a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
And seconded?
Second.
Seconded by. Any questions for the resolution? Okay, so moved.
Now you're done, guys, congratulations.
Great, thank you, we'll follow up with the building department and the engineers, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is 226 Travis Avenue, the stone wall and landscaping permit. Can I have a motion to open this to public hearing?
I motion to open up for public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Who do you have with you?
Just my engineer, Rob.
George, do you want to go first, or do you want them to go first?
No, well, I could start. So we received the plan, we reviewed it. As the board knows, there was a previous resolution that talked about the wall in the back. The applicant was also doing some work in the front of the property. That involves an addition and a drywell. What's going on in front, usually we get topography. So we have a comment, a letter, that we submitted to everyone. Front, there's some issues about the topography and some other minor things. The rear, the first, let's say, eight comments? The first eight comments are about the wall in the rear. If you look at the plan, some of the wall was built on the neighboring property. They should get approval from the neighboring property owner. I think they said he's okay with it, but we like to get that in writing. And then there's some, he's proposing two walls, one adjacent to the property line, and one further in from the property line. So according to the code, when you have certain height walls, you need certain distances apart. So he's given one wall section of the lower wall and possibly the upper wall, but we want to see something that has all three walls together, because this one section doesn't, it doesn't take into account the lateral loads from one, the lateral loads from the other. So it's an engineering exercise, it's not hard, it's pretty straightforward. For instance, this calls for four feet behind the wall for GeoGrid, and he's showing 3.78 feet between that wall and the wall behind it. So there's some things here that need to be clarified, worked out. When you marry all these walls together in one section, it'll probably become more clear. And then there's an issue with the fence. So when you add a fence to the top of the wall, it adds the fence plus the wall, and you can't exceed six feet in height. So otherwise, that fence has got to be, I think, 10 feet away. And we didn't see anything for a fence. So that's, you know, there's some details, I mean, we have a number of comments here, but that's it in a nutshell. If you want to add something.
No, I'm sure I'll be talking to you further, I just got the comments this afternoon. So, just not a lot to say right now, as far as that goes.
All these comments are addressable, and there's nothing that seems, you know, not addressable, I would think.
Sure, sure, that's fine.
So for them to move on with the project, is, what do they need as far as for the engineers to, and for the building inspectors to have?
So, once they go through these comments, they'll just update the plans, they'll add some topography, they'll add the other walls to this section in here, and resubmit to you, and at the next meeting, hopefully, you got something you can improve.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
When you began speaking, you said something about the front, there's work being done in the front. Is this now part of this project, or are we just limiting this to the rear and the wall?
So, I think, since both items are going on at the same time, putting them all on the same plan is okay. I mean, it makes it clear.
I just don't recall if there was ever an application to do any work in the front, or for limiting this to the back.
I would ask the building department.
Building Department?
Brian, Peter, was there, maybe you got it, was there a formal application for the addition to the side?
So, because of the issues we were having with the previous building inspector, I got, you know, permission to do one thing, and I did that one thing. It wasn't until after I found out that that one thing wasn't supposed to happen, that everything kind of turmoilled and turned into a little bit of a mess. In the process of all this, we were doing the code, did the code change for zoning to work on the addition. So at the same time, I was gonna put in for the permit for the addition, and then, once that went through, I would have a better landscaper-engineering of everything in the front or the side of the house. So what was one thing turned into two separate things.
So it's separate at the moment?
Separate at the moment.
So it's shown on the plan?
Correct.
But it's shown on the plan for what reason? Just because there's disturbance, or because you're moving that? It's shown on the plan, you're moving forward now, or that is like?
We're talking about the front of the property.
We're taking the front of the property, yeah.
I guess because it revises a proposed site plan versus just talking about the rear wall. So I think you're sending out for a revised site plan now, right? Versus, we were just discussing the rear wall.
And I don't have a copy of the plan, so.
So I think what should happen before the next meeting is, you should put an application in for the addition that you want on the side as well, and provide that to the board before the next meeting, they got more than enough time, and provide that to George to review as well, as part of the process. I think that's the most efficient way of doing it, is that way for the next meeting, you can address both.
Right, so we were just waiting on some information to come back from the building inspectors, to see if we submitted enough of the paperwork necessary to move on with the addition. So I submitted for the addition, I had to go back and go over some information that they required. So that's what slowed us up a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, Peter, Brian, do you have information on the addition of the side addition to the property? You're on mute.
Did you get a final? On mute.
On mute.
Well, what I have on here, I don't have actual final plans for the structure itself. I have a site plan showing where it's going to be, but I don't have the actual building plans to show how it's made, how the insulation is going, things such as that.
They do.
And the layout of each room.
They have the blueprints for my house.
Okay, so maybe tomorrow, guys, you can catch up together, and just make sure they have all the plans that you need for the architectural side of the addition. And then that way, you have a month to come together.
I mean, they have it, so, I'll talk with Peter tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, okay.
So there's gonna be a new application for the addition and the front landscaping, correct?
Right, but as I said, the wall was separate then.
Because the permit that you gave us, a copy, just says for the wall in the back.
Right.
Okay, so when you come back next month, you're gonna provide the village with the plans? Was there a new survey that needed to be done? I forget, I didn't look in my notes.
Well, they updated, from the last plan, they updated the survey. They showed some additional information, they showed the topography in the back, but they probably need some topography in the front to clarify what's happening with grades and so forth, so the board understands what's happening up front here.
Brian and Peter, did you guys get a chance to look at the memorandum that George sent on the property, and did you have any questions per the village, building inspection?
He's on mute, you're on mute.
You're muted still.
Guys, you're muted, Brian, Peter, you're muted, do you hear the question?
Sorry. Yes, heard the question.
Now, we heard the question. What date did George send that, because I have not seen it as of yet. I've seen a lot about the wall in the back, and the wall is gonna go in front of the existing wall, but I don't have a lot other than a site plan for the actual addition.
Was Peter on, were they on the chain today? It should have been on the chain today.
Did you receive an email today about that?
I have not been in the office today.
Okay.
All right, guys, so check tomorrow, if you have any comments, make sure you get together with the applicant and George, so we can move this forward, okay?
Certainly.
Is there any other questions that the board members have for the applicant?
Not until we receive the paperwork, for me.
And I would reach out to the neighbor about okaying that section of the block.
Yeah, Goams, write a letter and sign it.
Yes, please.
So you'll give us revised drawings on the site plan and the addition? I mean, I guess we have them, we just need copies of them, correct? Because we don't have them, so, right, okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you actually fill out an application for the addition to the property on the side. You might have submitted the plans, but you got to put an application in, so.
That's what I was working on.
Okay, perfect, okay.
And then, you're also putting a wall right through the shed that's, I guess, the neighbor's shed.
We're waiting for the shed to come down.
Oh, you've notified the neighbor to tell him that it needs to be moved.
Yeah, so we talked to the building inspector about it, and since the shed is not only a legal structure, it's an illegal structure that was built on my property. So they're saying since it was built illegally, and it's not in code, that they were gonna talk to the homeowner about having it removed.
Now, the letter you're sending to them, or is that coming from the building inspector?
That's coming from the building inspector.
Peter and Brian, were you guys sending a letter about the shed to be moved or taken down?
We have not been requested to do that. As of last, talking about the shed, the shed is why the wall is placed where it is. If I've been requested to talk to this homeowner, if not Mr. Calabria had spoken to the homeowner, I would be happy to talk to this alternative homeowner about the shed being improperly misplaced, and also the fact that it never had a permit.
Yeah, because I think we need to cover our bases with a letter from the village saying that the shed needs to be removed from that location before any of it. before any of this process can be moved forward with?
Well, I had talked to Brian, or not Brian, about it. I don't know, he may not remember. But I, I talked to him about it, and at first, he had mentioned that, you know, it was pre-existing, and unless the shed was built, you know, wasn't built in code, that it really was a civil matter. And so, I went and measured the shed, and found that it was length, width, and height illegal. And then, he said, well, since it is an illegal structure, that he's going to move forward with having it removed. I don't know if that fell by the wayside, I'm not sure, but if we have to revisit it, we will.
Is that a violation that the, the building inspector has to send out?
I think the difficulty was that they built it on his property. So, who do you violate? I think, that's what they're trying to work out.
Gotcha, well, half of it is on his property, half is on the other property.
Okay, half the shed is on the home property, all right, I see.
So, Brian and Peter, can you look at the plans and draw up a letter and get that over to the homeowner, so that they could remove the shed?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? George, I had a question before about the back retaining wall, there was a, a lot of water coming out. And was there any erosion back there, do you recall?
I haven't been back there recently, so maybe the owner can answer that, if anything's.
I haven't seen, from what I understand, it's been dry. I know the, the neighbor had, I guess he used to have a fish pond or something down there. But as far as, you know, any water coming out of the wall, it's nothing that I've been aware of.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Okay, have a motion to close the public hearing?
Uh, actually, I don't think you want to do that.
Yeah, you'll, you'll make a motion to, to keep it open, you know, is this a public hearing?
I thought the public hearing was closed already.
Right, you know, I'm a little confused, I know it's been a long time. I think we closed the public hearing originally, and then, you know, sort of gave them six months to come back in. So, either way, you're going to keep the motion to keep this open till the next meeting.
Actually, do they have to set a public hearing?
Are we ready to set a public hearing?
Actually, you don't, you don't have an application.
Yeah.
We already had the public, we had the public hearing.
We had the public hearing for the wall repair. Now, now you're opening up another window for an addition, and then landscaping in the front.
Already had, we already went through the public hearing for the addition, and that's when the code got changed.
No.
And since I'm within the code, yes, I did. And now that I'm within the code, I don't need to have a public hearing for the addition. They changed the code.
Taking action and reviewing it.
Remember the board allow, modify the code and go off to the front yard? So, maybe you want to explain, so.
It's like four years.
Ever though you meet the code regarding now the setbacks that need to be done? I'm not going to worry, I can explain.
Yeah, you don't need a variance.
But, you need a, you don't need a variance, but you still need a site plan approval for the addition.
Right, but if you're asking for a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, so, when you come to it.
So, what you want is, if, what you probably would want to request is that if you get everything in by the deadline date of the next meeting, that it become a public hearing. I would request that.
Okay.
Okay, so, so basically, we're going to need the new application for the, the addition and the front landscaping. The bill, billing inspectors will send the letters to remove the shed, and then you're going to get updated plans for George as far as the three dimensional walls, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions?
An addition, right, the full site plan.
Right, with the addition.
With the addition.
With the addition, yes.
So, we're scheduling a public hearing, I'm sorry, sidebar here.
Yes, we're going to schedule a public hearing for next month.
What's the date?
The date of the next meeting?
Uh, yes.
19th.
19 August. And that's only if we have everything in.
Right.
Correct. So, we'll leave this issue open for additional material.
Well, if we're scheduling it, I have to notice that you'll have to pick up a legal notice and send it along. So, if we're scheduling it now, we're going to move through the motions.
Correct.
Yes, you could open it, if they're not ready, you'd open it and continue it to the following one.
Right.
I just want to clarify. So then, I will do a legal notice, and then we'll be downstairs with Cindy and Sharon, Thursday, Thursday, maybe tomorrow. And there'll be people within certification area, and we'll send it certified now, return receipt.
Okay.
And then, at the next meeting, you'll bring green cards showing how many people signed.
I have to do that again?
Yeah.
This is ridiculous.
I don't recall having a strong plan for.
I've done this, it's like, how many times do I have to send these green cards now?
Wait, you did it for the, for the wall, right?
I did it for the wall, I did it for the addition.
When did we do it for the addition?
When I went to the, in front of the, um, the board, the, um, the board.
The zoning board? Yeah, it's a different one.
It's a different board.
And you probably were getting a variance, and then they changed the code, and so you didn't need the variance. That was the zoning board.
Right, so, then why do I need to do that, I need to do, I have to do that all over again?
Well, then we're planning, because they're going to give you a site plan, and add all of this to it.
All right, so then, keep the house separate from this, keep the wall and the house two separate things.
So, just move forward.
Move forward the wall, keep the house separate from the wall.
Okay, so then, George, what do you want with the plans? Leave what's on the plans, and we're not going to deal with the?
Well, he still has to have a 3D dimension of the walls.
Right, and, and they're talking about that, I'm asking George, I, I don't have the plan, so I don't know what's shown, I don't know, you know, what we're dealing with in terms of the front.
So, George, to move forward with just the wall, what do you need? The updated plans, correct?
I still need an updated plan, yes.
Okay, and responses to your engineering memo? Okay.
So, we need answering to the memorandum, we need the letter from the village building inspector to go to remove the shed, and then we need updated plans to move forward.
So, the wall goes out.
Well, I'm going to ask for the addition, but I'm keeping it separate from this. So, I can keep the wall and the, keep the wall separate from the addition. So, I can put in for the addition, have that be a whole other thing on its own. Two separate things.
That's right.
I don't want to mix them up, the pot's just boiling right now. So, this way, that front section that they're referring to, I can submit with the addition. Because I don't know how I'm going to do the wall until the house gets moved. Then that changes how, how I can do a retaining wall in the front. So, we're just going to do, just focus everything on, right, take two, do two separate things.
All right, so I guess we're going to remove the sheepish pen and the, and the addition, and we just take it off the plan for the next meeting. Just focus on the wall and the back. That's fine.
And so, you'll just respond to the memo that deals with the wall and the back?
Well, yeah, like, like was just mentioned, it'll be a separate, separate application.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the, the next thing on the agenda is just a review of 3176 Albany Post Road.
We've received nothing.
Can you maybe put on the record what's still missing, just sort of, I know you didn't memorize it, but do we, we're missing steep slopes analysis, and they remediated, right? The top, it's stable?
Correct, so they stabilized the site, and we're just waiting for the, the steep slopes analysis and the responses to our previous memorandum.
But did Rosemary send out the letter?
The letter never went out, and Stephanie will assist us in making up a letter, and then we'll review it and send it out, so that way, we'll either get the information or we would deem it abandoned, the project.
Okay. And if I could suggest, perhaps, my letter might state that we want the missing information plans within 15 days, or two weeks before. This is going to go on and on, and if we don't get that, then we won't have the meeting, and he'll be abandoned.
Correct.
Because somebody's got to move this along. I did see, I think, that he hired counsel today, right? So, he's got new counseling, so hopefully, we'll have some conversations and get it going. But if that would be okay with you, that's what the letter will say.
That'd be fine, thank you. All right, does any of the other board members have any new business?
No.
Marcus, can you give us a review on the applicant for replacing David?
Oh, sure, Victor, he's on the line right now. Victor, maybe you want to describe what's happening with the company? Our understanding is at this point, that David is being reassigned, and you're going to be the primary person for the village? So, officially, why don't you introduce yourself, give a little background to the board, and maybe talk to you about it as well?
Sure, yeah, David's kind of, he's still around, but he's kind of going into a little bit of a retirement. So, I am kind of going to serve as the primary person for the village. David will still be around to kind of provide QA QC and serve as a technical, you know, provide technical advice. Myself, I've got about 30 years of experience in planning. Worked on a wide range of studies, comprehensive plans, land use and zoning analysis, transportation plans, also environmental assessments, departmental impact statements. So, I've been doing this for a while. So, that's our plan, you know, we also have, what's nice about our firm is that we also have two other planners that I can draw, you know, that we can draw on to, to provide assistance when necessary. And also, we have a traffic group as well, if that comes up. So, that is, that's our plan for going forward. You know, I've been in a few of these meetings so far, and I did, you know, was involved in developing the design guidelines for the overlay districts, so I do have a little bit of familiarity.
Well, can I say welcome, because I thought you were just here sort of sitting in once or twice?
All right, so it's hard to hear you, sorry.
Why is this?
Marcus is coming in loud, but everybody else is kind of a little mumbled.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, I want to welcome you. I would have done that earlier, but I thought you were just sort of sitting in, maybe David had been reassigned for a month or two. So, I'm, I for one, look forward to working with you, I've, I've liked working with everybody from your firm. And so, call, write, call, write, email, anytime, because we should have contact, and welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
So, Marcus, how do we move forward for bringing Victor on board?
Victor will be, will be automatically our representative with the company. So, we'll just keep on moving forward with Victor from this point forward.
Okay, welcome, Victor, we got some plans for you to look at.
Thank you, yes, send everything to me, you can forward everything to me.
Okay, is there any additional agendas, no?
No, I have nothing.
Tracy, you have anything?
I don't have anything.
All right, well, enjoy your vacation. See you moving there. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, wait, hold on, I got something with a chat just came in.
Someone came in?
Uh, if you can read, read this, it says, Paul ARQ PC Engineer, representing 316.
Oh.
No, there you go.
Albany Post, Albany Post Road. So, let me allow me to.
Okay, Paul, you're on, you can speak.
Good evening, how are you? I just, I couldn't really hear the proceeding, but my name is Paul Matei, from ARQ PC, and I just wanted to be present, at least by zoom, if there were any questions for the board. We are working on getting the right paperwork to process this application, but if there's any questions that I can answer while I'm here, that would help us progress this, so it would be great to hear.
Paul, Paul, welcome, we're going to be sending a letter out, and there's going to be requirements of the steep slope analysis, plus the memorandum that the Han Engineering PC sent out that needs to be addressed?
Yep, we can do it.
So, so this, all this stuff that we're going to send to you must be here by the next meeting? If not, the project will be deemed abandoned.
Understood.
Uh, Paul, do you have all engineering, the engineers' comments?
I have, I have the comments, yes. And I spoke to George, Mr. Palmer, sorry, a week ago.
George, did you need any additional information from them, other than what we just discussed?
Do you think you're going to be able to submit for this next meeting?
Um, yeah, I don't have the deadline in front of me, but I will look at that in the morning.
What is it, 10 days before, two weeks, two weeks before the meeting?
Yeah, Paul, you know, you heard George, George said, we need it within the next two weeks, so you'll be able to get that information to him?
No.
We can absolutely do that, for sure.
That's the letter that he's going out, it's in two weeks to get the material, so you can have time to review it for the next one. So, if he can do it, great.
If you could do it before two weeks, it'd be even better.
As always, for sure, yes, 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 sir.
By the way, Paul, can you email me and George, and that way, again, Stephanie Potius, your email address, your contact information, but we didn't know you were on board yet.
No, we, we knew you were on board, it's that we didn't know that you were still actively working on the project, so it seemed to stagnate a little bit. And, I guess there was some discussion, the attorney wasn't talking to everyone else, or, and the owner got COVID, so it kind of was, kind of disjointed for a while, so we just wondered.
Sure.
So, it seems.
So, I'll, I'll try and do my best to get it back on track and get this, and we'll get it in the next two weeks, and hopefully move it forward to, to move this application along. I appreciate the patience.
And Paul, I don't know if you missed it, the next planning board meeting is on the 19th, so you can get that information to Paul, we can, the board can discuss your application on that day, that night.
You go ahead. Understood.
All right, there, any, any new or additional? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, so moved, thank you.